Good evening. We welcome you here to West Valley City's regular city council meeting. We call our meeting to order. We note that we have a full quorum present, including our, although none are new to the council, there are three newly elected members who were officially sworn in earlier today, taking their duties. And so, we are glad to have them all here. And we'll begin our meeting with an opening ceremony. We'll turn to newly-elected council member, Don Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor. Right after, or just about a week ago, the city recorder came to me and she said, "You're up on the opening ceremony if you're up to it on your first meeting." And I said, "That will be very easy. I happen to know a good scout troop, and it's Scout Troop 343 and 643." And they're meeting together at this time, and they have agreed to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll turn the time over to their senior patrol leader.
Clerk Guard Tan Chat, will the audience please rise and sweep the flag in proper manner? Clerk Guard Salute, please defeat the pledge of allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience may be seated. Clerk Guard Smith.
Thank you. Now generally, we have scout troops introduce themselves, but since you've introduced them, were all of the scouts here with that group?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Very well. Well, thank you for coming and participating tonight. And maybe, if you haven't already all done it, maybe there's something you can pass off on one of your merit badges or something by attending a council meeting. So with that then, we go to the next item on our agenda, our minutes of December 8th, to the council for a motion.
Mayor, move for approval of the December 8th minutes?
Second. We have a motion and a second on our minutes for approval. Any discussion? They're okay as they are. Then we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of December 8th, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passed unanimously. The minutes are approved. We go now to item six on our agenda, and we will begin with Employee of the Month Award. We'll turn to Councilman Steve Beulah.
Thank you, Mayor. The Employee of the Month is Jay Lampa. Is Jay Lampa here?
Yeah.
We want to recognize you, and you stand there with your fellow firefighters while we let everybody know what a great guy you are, okay? This nomination was written by Captain Jeremy McBride of the Fire Department. On Saturday, November 14th, the Fire Department held a garage sale for one of our citizens. Her name is Angie Cunningham. We responded on her multiple times to help her from the toilet to her powered wheelchair. She always has such a great gratitude and is so thankful for our help, it makes it easy with "Go help her out." We responded on her last year when she spilled a pot of warm water on her lap as well. She has tried to earn enough money for a new powered chair that will lift her up and down and make it so she is able to cook for her family and use the restroom without help. We were trying to find a way to help her out. Jay Lampa decided we should have a garage sale for her. He had flyers made up for the abandoned homes, signs around the area to get people to attend. Many of the Fire Department members were there to help and many donated items to be sold. It was a huge success. We made over $7,500 for her that day. And I just want to add a personal note, I've tried to head yard sales, and boy, if I get 20 bucks, I'm wishing that I hadn't done it at all. I think Jay should be nominated for his efforts on this project. We need more people like this who go above and beyond the call of duty to help our citizens.
And Jay, if you'd like to, you can take a moment and tell us who's here with you, and say anything else that you'd like to say.
So I got the rest of my crew with Station 73 and Station 75, Station 75 being my normal station. Really, this is more on behalf of them because they really did the lion's share of the work. I just kind of there to help and facilitate. So Angie is a great person, and we're really happy and thankful that we were able to go and help her out. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to the firefighters who did most of the work here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the good work you do. Next, we go to our Division of the Quarter Award, Animal Services. We turn to Councilman Steve Vincent.
Thank you, Mayor. The Division of the Quarter Award was nominated by Chris Curtis, the Animal Service Administrator. The animals, she writes, "The animal shelter staff consists of a director, two supervisors, two lead technicians, four technicians, three clerks, one adoption specialist, a dispatcher, and five officers. Members of the team depend on one another to accomplish the task laid before them, provide a safe and clean environment, and find families for homeless animals. The animal shelter staff also works together to keep citizens and animals safe on the road in West Valley City and Taylorsville. Staff is continually developing and recommending new and innovative ideas to improve efficiency and productivity in the shelter as well as on the road. The staff works as a team to ensure all members benefit from any changes and are willing to accept modifications. Each change is designed to help meet and accomplish goals. Members of the staff repeatedly accept additional responsibilities during extended periods of staffing shortages and abnormal heavy workloads, and work as a team to accomplish daily routines. The staff has shown diligence in completing long-term or frequent short-term special projects while maintaining a high efficiency in regularly assigned job duties. The staff shows good judgment when faced with a variety of interactions with the public. Each day presents its own unique situations. Each situation is approached with confidence by each individual who excels at enforcing standards, policies, and procedures, and are skilled in handling difficult circumstances and people. The animal service staff has stepped outside their official job description to advocate for animals in the shelter and support management. The range of networking done by the staff members covers a wide variety of experiences. From rescues to donations, the animal service staff continues to go the extra mile to meet and exceed goals. All of these things have helped the West Valley Animal Shelter maintain a no-kill status and gain positive recognition and support in the community. Along with the staff members, I would like to also recognize the many outside organizations, scout troops, and individuals that support the mission of West Valley City Animal Services Division. The shelter receives countless volunteer hours, advertising, donations, and funding that improve the health and welfare of the animal sheltered animals. The volunteers include Best Friends of Utah, Orchard Animal Clinic, Salt Lake Bay and Neuter, Mid Valley Animal Clinic, Pets &amp; Such, and Culvers, as well as community volunteers like Debbie Orchard, Christina Owens, Brian and Rhonda Schuster, Nikki Sade, Tamar Christensen, Barry Sasewick, Barbara Bettini, Eliza Stone, and Nancy Lion Gray. For this reason, I highly recommend the West Valley Animal Shelter staff and volunteers be recognized for their hard work and commitment to making West Valley a better place for both the animals and the people to live. I don't know who's coming up. Is Chris coming up to get this?
Oh.
Okay.
I think you're part of all of y'all here.
Thanks for all the advice. We didn't personally receive a lot of criticism, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
You guys can stop.
Less fall in the back, less fall in the front.
I was gonna say, yeah.
You can't see me, I can't see you. I'm gonna do a couple with this one, and then I'm gonna do with my phone. It's vinyl. It's like tie-dyers in high school. Okay, here we go. Looking at me. Nice day, babe.
We know that one.
This is actually the important one. The rest of the, Chris will have one copy for each of you. Thank you very much for your work and service. We appreciate it. Makes things go much better in our city with all these good people involved. With that, our next item, yes, and it's permissible, you can leave in the middle of the meeting. It's okay. Happens all the time. Next, we have our comment period. Was there anyone who signed up? No one wanted to speak in the public comment period. Oh, okay. It's a new year. Everyone's already had their say, I guess. Any comments from our city manager?
No, sir. Thank you.
Any comments from the city council members? I have to look both ways a couple of times so I don't get run over. With that then, we'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which we go to our public hearings. Item number eight on our agenda is to access public input in a public hearing regarding the reopening of our 2015-2016 budget going from July 1st of last year to June 30th of this year. And the purpose of this is to make some changes. There are some additional grant money, rollovers of funds set. In order to meet requirements on our budget, we modify those so we are able to utilize those funds. There aren't too many items that are new additional general fund items. Most of these come from specialized funds. But a list of all those items is on the agenda, and anyone can look at those items to see the specifics and the detail of that. For the information of those who may not be aware, this is the second time we will have discussed these issues here in our council meetings. We did so our last meeting, oh boy, December 15th. So it's been a few weeks because of year end that we didn't meet. But all the items that we talk about, with few exceptions, are heard twice by the council. With that, we will open to the public any one desiring to make comments regarding our budget for the current year, the reopening of the budget.
Have a question here. What is the?
If you come up to the microphone, we have to record everything that we say by law, state law. We don't even get to make that law.
What is the total budget anyhow?
The total budget?
Yeah.
Now, we used to want the grand total. Now, there's two pieces to that. One is what we call our operating budget, which is the city part, and Mr. Pyle can give the exact numbers. But there's also an expanded budget that includes all of our specialized funds. We call them enterprise funds, such as the Maverick Center and everything else. And so they're two different numbers.
So the annual operating budget, as the mayor referred to, is about $65 million a year. And if you total in all the other enterprise funds, it's about $100 million a year.
Okay. At least there was a comment. Someone actually came to our meeting. So we do get scout troops fairly regularly, but not as many citizens unless we want to talk about chickens or cats or something. Then we'll get a budget. With that then, seeing no further public comment, I will close the public comment period for reopening the budget. We'll declare that closed. We'll come back now to the council to address ordinance number 15-42, which is authorizing the reopening of the budget and the making of these adjustments. To the council then for comment or for a motion.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance number 15-42.
Second. We have a motion and a second before us. Do we have any further discussion? These are fairly routine changes. There's not a lot of controversy on these, so pretty straightforward. That's why you probably don't see a lot of people here. Seeing no further discussion, we'll go to our city recorder, who take a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Beulah?
Aye.
Councilman Beal?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Call in the back.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Less call in the front.
Nice try.
You can't see me, I can't see you. I'm gonna do a couple with this one, and then I'm gonna do with my phone. It's vinyl. It's like tie-dyers in high school. Okay, here we go. Looking at me. Nice day, babe. This is actually the important one. The rest of the, Chris will have one copy for each of you. Thank you very much for your work and service. We appreciate it. Makes things go much better in our city with all these good people involved. With that, our next item, yes, and it's permissible, you can leave in the middle of the meeting. It's okay. Happens all the time. Next, we have our comment period. Was there anyone who signed up? No one wanted to speak in the public comment period. Oh, okay. It's a new year. Everyone's already had their say, I guess. Any comments from our city manager?
No, sir. Thank you.
Any comments from the city council members? I have to look both ways a couple of times so I don't get run over. With that then, we'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which we go to our public hearings. Item number eight on our agenda is to access public input in a public hearing regarding the reopening of our 2015-2016 budget going from July 1st of last year to June 30th of this year. And the purpose of this is to make some changes. There are some additional grant money, rollovers of funds set. In order to meet requirements on our budget, we modify those so we are able to utilize those funds. There aren't too many items that are new additional general fund items. Most of these come from specialized funds. But a list of all those items is on the agenda, and anyone can look at those items to see the specifics and the detail of that. For the information of those who may not be aware, this is the second time we will have discussed these issues here in our council meetings. We did so our last meeting, oh boy, December 15th. So it's been a few weeks because of year end that we didn't meet. But all the items that we talk about, with few exceptions, are heard twice by the council. With that, we will open to the public any one desiring to make comments regarding our budget for the current year, the reopening of the budget.
Have a question here. What is the?
If you come up to the microphone, we have to record everything that we say by law, state law. We don't even get to make that law.
What is the total budget anyhow?
The total budget?
Yeah.
Now, we used to want the grand total. Now, there's two pieces to that. One is what we call our operating budget, which is the city part, and Mr. Pyle can give the exact numbers. But there's also an expanded budget that includes all of our specialized funds. We call them enterprise funds, such as the Maverick Center and everything else. And so they're two different numbers.
So the annual operating budget, as the mayor referred to, is about $65 million a year. And if you total in all the other enterprise funds, it's about $100 million a year.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Well, at least there was a comment. Someone actually came to our meeting. So we do get scout troops fairly regularly, but not as many citizens unless we want to talk about chickens or cats or something. Then we'll get a budget. With that then, seeing no further public comment, I will close the public comment period for reopening the budget. We'll declare that closed. We'll come back now to the council to address ordinance number 15-42, which is authorizing the reopening of the budget and the making of these adjustments. To the council then for comment or for a motion.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance number 15-42.
Second. We have a motion and a second before us. Do we have any further discussion? These are fairly routine changes. There's not a lot of controversy on these, so pretty straightforward. That's why you probably don't see a lot of people here. Seeing no further discussion, we'll go to our city recorder, who take a vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We'll go on to resolutions. We have Resolution 15-202. This is to approve an agreement with JRCAR, JRCA Architects, for the design and construction of our Public Works and Parks operation facilities. This is the one on 3600 West at approximately 2850 South. And so that place there, we have had some expanded facilities, some additional land. We're going to now start that process by doing the design work and come back with a proposal. And at some future point, we will determine if we will then fund that and build it on some time ticket. So right now, we're just doing the design work for that. That is the item before us. We turn to the council now for comment or action.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 15-202.
Second.
We have a motion and a second properly before us. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing no further comments, we'll go to our city recorder for a roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Beulah?
Aye.
Councilman Beal?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Aye.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We now go to the second resolution on our agenda, which is Resolution 15-203. This one is to approve the purchase of traffic signal equipment from the Utah Department of Transportation. This is at the intersection of 2400 South. This is what we call our 4800 West project. And so this is what's before us. They're allowing us the opportunity to pay for that. I said my comments in the last meeting, so I won't beat them up too much more, although I am going to meet with them again next year. That is the item before us. This is just for the new signalized lights to go in there that will be placed in there. So with that, to the council for comment or action. I guess I didn't, what's the cost on that? Do you have that right?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand? Yeah, okay. Should mention that, just so it's on the record.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 15-203.
Okay. We have a motion and a second is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving Resolution 15-203. Oh, that's right. I get carried away. And so we'll turn to our city recorder for.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Beal?
Aye.
Councilman Beulah?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Sometimes I get in the habit of just doing that without, but I have good people here who assist me, and I need assistance on occasion. Okay, that takes us through the resolutions. We now have new business, which is to elect a mayor pro temp. Every two years, a new mayor pro temp is elected. Every four years? Oh, okay.
Both concurrent with the mayor's term.
This election is because our mayor pro temp is no longer on the calendar.
Well, now, that's interesting. See, I'm learning this too. I was here last, two years ago, so I just assumed it was two years. But, okay. So what if someone's elected who's on a two-year term? Then they just, we just have to reelect someone again? Okay.
It's a no-cost election.
That's a good thing. Okay, now, on this, do we have to have any instructions? Is there anything we have to cover for setting this up properly? The first time I had to be walked to, it's only the second time I've done it. I've been mayor for two years. It's only the second time. So is there something we need to do, instructions to give?
We just need nominations. The person who's nominated just needs to either accept or deny that nomination. And then we would make a motion to close any more further nominations, and then another motion to actually elect a mayor pro temp.
So we have two motions. Anyone can nominate. That's not through a motion. But then, after that's done, we have a motion to close nominations, and then we have a motion to take a vote. Unless, what if three people are running?
If the first motion passes or fails and decides how it goes to the, if you have multiple candidates.
Okay. And if there are multiple, well, okay, I'll ask you that question later, because I have no idea. With that then.
Mayor, I would like to nominate our colleague Steve Vincent to serve as mayor pro temp for the two years remaining on this term. He's a senior member of the council and has shown his dedication and diligence in serving on the council. But I believe he would do a good job serving in that position and be able to accept and assume those additional responsibilities of representing the city, conducting meetings, and otherwise when the mayor of the city yourself is not available to do so.
So no seconds necessary, but there does require the nominated candidate to accept or not accept.
I would accept that nomination. I move that the nomination ceases.
I'll second that.
Okay. Now, this one has to be a roll call vote as well, correct? Okay. So seeing no?
We need a motion then for the election.
No, wait a minute. We have to vote the nominations, because that was a motion and seconded, so we go to the roll call vote.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Beulah?
Aye.
Councilman Beal?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Aye.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. So the nominations have ceased. So our motion with, do we need to make a motion by acclamation? So we need a motion that Steve Vincent be elected as mayor pro temp by acclamation.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. So it's properly before us. And to our city recorder for roll call.
Councilman Northwell?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Beal?
Aye.
Councilman Beulah?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. With that taken care of, we go to our consent agenda. We have two items. Consent agenda items are typically fairly routine and do not require much explanation. Resolution 15-204, a right-of-way contract warranty deed. This is at the 40th West and 4100 South intersection for rights of way, just as we expand intersections. Resolution 15-205 is the appointment, ratifying the appointment of the city manager, appointment of Shelley Day as a member of the Cultural Arts Board. of Shelley Day as a member of the Cultural Arts Board. Usually, there's not too much discussion on these, however, the council has the right to divide those, but if not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda or something else.
Just one clarification, Mayor.
Yes.
I heard today, Mr. Pyle, that Shelley may not be able to continue as chair of the cultural...
That's correct.
Okay, I have not heard that.
Well, yeah, we may want to remove this for now.
Do you want to take the vote now anyway, since I haven't been notified, and then remove her afterwards, or completely up your council? You can also just plain not approve the nomination if you know for sure that's the case.
Well, there's, she can always send a representative, I guess, so, yeah. I agree.
So, I guess I didn't understand the comment when she might not be able to...
She doesn't have issues she's dealing with, it may cause her not to be able to... She's serving as chairman of the Arts Council right now, and she may not be able to continue as that, and usually it's the chairman of each of those councils or on the Cultural Arts Board.
So, she may not be able to continue that, so what's the appropriate motion to do? Pass it, and then if she can't, she would have to resign?
I think, I think...
Should we just hold it for...
I think we could pass it, and then depending on what her health is, she can send the vice chair to go to the interstate, so...
Okay.
And again, completely it's your council's pleasure, the only reason I'd even propose in the two ways is just I haven't heard anything about it, so I don't know, other than by your information, so...
Yeah, I think the best way to have to wait for her to send a letter to us and let us know about this.
Yeah. And is this one that, yeah, starts January 1st, so, okay.
Mayor, I'll move for approval of the two items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve those, second?
Second.
We have a second, properly before us, any further discussion? Now we'll go to our city recorder for roll call vote.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. With that, that completes our regularly scheduled work, any other comments from the council? For the information, the scouts, you will note that as soon as we adjourn this meeting, we'll start another meeting. We have three other meetings, they're usually pretty brief, you're welcome to stay or not, it's up to you. And so with that, we don't have a need for an executive session, we will then take a final motion for our regular council meeting to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Motion passes unanimously, we're adjourned.
I would like to open the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency regular meeting, note that we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call in all our attendance. Our first item is the minutes from December 1st, 2015.
Now, I'm chair, I move for approval of the minutes.
If we do have a second?
We have a second.
Thank you, we have a...
Well, I have one of the first.
Sorry, an approval and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication or report from Mr. Pyle?
Done ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to open a public hearing for the... Oh, some kind of brain crap. The budget, is the word, for 2015-16. Mr. Pyle, would you please?
You bet, thanks ma'am. So, just as in the regular meeting that was held in the city council meeting, each of the other entities also have to have a budget opening, and we've determined by policy to do that on a quarterly basis. For the RDA, there's only one item in the budget opening, and that is to receive the proceeds from the refinancing of the piece of debt that we conducted during the year, so total of $3,163,000, which is then, of course, used to turn over the finance piece that we already had in place.
Okay, thank you. Is there, we'll open the public hearing portion of this, is anyone here to speak on this motion? Okay, we will close the public hearing, do we have any further discussion or motion?
I would move approval of resolution 16-01.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. In fact, do we have to have a roll call, Nicole?
We should.
Sorry, would you do that for me, please?
No problem.
Yay. Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next resolution is to amend the bylaws for the redevelopment agency. Mr. Pyle, would you like to explain that one?
Yes ma'am, thank you, and I also apologize, I forgot that this was an item in the study meeting. The council had requested earlier, earlier meeting last year, that we look at the calendar schedules for the building authority, housing authority, and the redevelopment agency, and under the redevelopment agency actual ordinance, we can do all of those, but we would need to modify the bylaws, and that's what this item would do, it would allow the, it would amend the bylaws to allow for a meeting schedule that was more flexible and did not require a monthly meeting, which is the current requirement.
Okay, so is it set on a quarterly basis or just as needed?
The way that we're going to, and it's not considered or wouldn't be adopted in this item, this is just the bylaws amendment, but the way that we're going to propose it to the council is that we would have quarterly meetings for each one of the entities, but then we also actually have to have a couple of more meetings around the June timeframe because of budget adoption. Now, if that's sufficient for the council, we wanted to give you the widest range, or if you want to have even fewer meetings, we could even go to a semi-annual meeting schedule, but then also add the budget meetings in the June, July-ish timeframe. The only thing that would be different from the RDA versus the building authority and the housing authority is we would, and we already are allowed under the current schedule to have more special meetings, because as you know, we have more RDA projects in common for you.
Okay. So is there any further discussion or motion?
I was gonna make the observation that we do have a lot of special meetings for the RDA, and so we pretty much hold them as needed, and then we come to our regular first of the month meeting, and maybe we only have minutes, because we've already done our business, so I think this would be an appropriate and efficient amendment, and therefore move for approval of resolution 16-02.
Thank you, do you have something?
Second.
Thank you. Nicole, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
So now we have an election for a new chairperson for 2016. Anybody like to make a nomination? Do we have...
Yes.
Just want to make a quick comment, ma'am, no nominations coming from this quarter, but just for the record or the possible procedure, by practice in the past, not by policy, doesn't have to be done this way, but by practice, what the various boards have done is alternate that position between the members, and this particular year, who would cycle up for the chair position would be Mr. Bueller, and who would be in line for the vice chair position would be Mr. Hume.
Thank you. May we hold those two separate?
Correct.
Thank you.
You make it sound like it's not on merit.
It's on merit.
I would nominate Steve Bueller as chair for the redevelopment agency for the year 2016.
Second.
Thank you. Nicole?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And now, do we have a nomination?
Make a motion for Tom Hume to be vice chair.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And I'm sure you both will do a great job. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
If you're all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Call to order, the building authority of West Valley City, we've had a roll call show all here, we had an opening ceremony, we need approval of minutes of December 1st.
I move for approval of the November 1st minutes?
December.
I mean, December, sorry.
Second.
I have a motion and second, are there any discussion to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any communications?
No, sir, thank you.
Report?
No, sorry.
We have one public hearing, and similar to what we've had in the other meetings, and it's public input to regarding our budget opening for the building authority, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, sir, there's also one item on this budget opening, it's in the amount of $301,379.26, and it's for the Maverick Center, which entered into through the building authority and the equipment lease for the purchase of computer systems and lights, lighting systems.
Okay, we'll now open the public hearing on the budget, is there anybody here to speak to the, this budget opening? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council for, or to the committee for a vote. We would move approval of resolution number 16-01.
Second.
We have a motion and second. City recorder, we'll turn the time over to you.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We also have elections for the next year, and it looks like on the list that's been handed to us as the rotation would be Don Christensen as chair and Karen Lang as vice chair, so look to some motions for either for those positions. Mr. Chair, nominate Don Christensen to serve as the chair this coming year.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Nicole, turn it over to you.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We also need a nomination for the vice chair. Mr. Chair, nominate Karen Lang to serve as vice chair.
Second.
We have a motion and second, turn it over to the city recorder.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Yes.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have one more motion?
Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn, this meeting's been adjourned.
We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City, of the West Valley City Housing Authority tonight, and opening ceremony earlier by Councilman Don Christensen, and roll call, we have the quorum here tonight. Item number four is approval of minutes, so I will turn it over to the council.
I move for approval of the December 1st minutes.
We need a second?
Second.
Thank you. All favorites on the, in this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no, and this motion passes unanimously. Communication and report, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, sir, I have none this evening.
Okay, thank you. I look at this circle here with the number, item number seven is the chairman is Lars Norfair, and the vice chair is Steve Vincent, so that's, I will turn it over to the council.
I would move to elect Lars Northfeld as the chairman this year for the housing authority.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and we'll turn it over to the city recorder, Nicole.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Hume?
Thank, aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number B is, I also will turn it over to the council.
Would move, we nominate Steve Vincent as vice chair.
Second.
And we'll turn to city recorder.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairman Hume?
Aye, thank you.
Motion passes.
Oh, sorry, thank you. And one of the last items is the, item number eight.
We'll adjourn.
Yep. All the favorites in this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, please say no, so we are adjourned.